November 12th meeting of the Rally Planning Commission. I'm Nicole Bennett, Chair of the Commission. Welcome to everyone joining us here in person and to those joining us online. Commissioners O'Haver and Fox are absent and excused. A few reminders before we get started. Please wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. Please be courteous to each other, applicant staff, and the public, and let's keep our comments constructive and focused on the cases we are discussing. We begin each meeting with an opportunity for members of the public to address us on an item not on the agenda. Is there anyone here this morning who wishes to speak about an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our agenda, beginning with the consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda minutes from our last two meetings. Does anyone need to pull either one of those items to revise anything? If not, then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. We don't have any committee reports or any old business, so we'll move directly into new business. We have one item, rezoning Z-2925 Trailwood Drive. I'll turn to staff for a presentation.
Good morning, Chair and Commission. My name is Jacob Hunt with Planning and Development Staff. Before you today is Z-2925. This is 1116 and 1126 Trailwood Drive. The request is to rezone approximately 2.8 acres from R4 with a special parking overlay to R10 conditional use with the same special parking overlay district. Your deadline for action is January 24th, 2026. So here's a map showing the general location of the site and the surrounding zoning. The area is predominantly residential. There is some conservation land to the west. As you can see, the overlay is the hatched area. This is R4. The nearest R10 district is approximately 550 feet north of this site up Trailwood, and this is just outside of the Trailwood NCOD. Giving you a little bit aerial picture of the site. The Walnut Creek Greenway is to the west, and you can hop onto that heading up Trailwood. Predominantly around this site, low-scale residential detached housing and Centennial Campus is to the west. There is shopping centers on Avant Ferry Road, including a food line. Here is a picture of the site looking north and south. There is a single-family home on the site today. It is made up of two lots, but still only one structure. If this were to be approved and to come into the city and develop, there's a high likelihood they would be required to build sidewalks and bike lanes on their frontage. The proposed conditions for the site prohibited uses include vest homes, cemetery, schools, a few non-residential uses, and this application also would prohibit the apartment building So existing today with the R4 zoning district, approximately 24 units is the maximum that could be built. Forty units could be built with the proposed R10 district. Setbacks would be reduced essentially across the board. So this site has a higher transportation cost index than average, which does mean transportation costs are lower than the city average, but it does score more poorly on the walk, bike, and job proximity than city average. This site is pretty well-served by transit. Both Route 11 and 11L running downtown and kind of a loop in west Raleigh are on Avant Ferry, less than half a mile north of this site. At that same stop, the site's also served by the Wolf Line bus service, which is a free NC State route that goes to both Centennial and the main campus. And again, that's free to everyone. So this site does add to the market housing. It permits a variety of housing types excluding those apartment housing types. Smaller units are allowed than would be currently permitted, or not currently permitted, but are common citywide, smaller lot size than average, and is in walking distance to transit. This application does not include subsidized units. So area residents here are less likely to be racial minorities compared to the city average and more likely to be low-income than the city average. We find that the R10 CU zoning request is consistent with the low-scale residential future land use map, predominantly due to its access to transit. As I said, this site is well-served by multiple transit options. So we find it consistent with the future land use map and consistent with the urban form map. There are a number of consistent policies with this request, both the future land use map, the fact that this is capitalizing on that transit access. That's kind of a major part of this consistency, the connectivity, and the fact that it will allow for a variety of housing types. This would be an infill site. While it's currently in a county pocket, it is essentially surrounded by city of Raleigh. And as I said, kind of the main overarching point is that the transit access on this infill lot is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Two areas that this is inconsistent are the zoning and infrastructure impacts and the response time standards. Those are both related to fire response times of ladder trucks and second unit arrivals. Your deadline for action again is January 24th. There are no known outstanding issues, and your upcoming meetings are December 9th. Happy to answer any questions. Turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you. We'll turn now to public comment. The applicant and those in support have 10 minutes.
Good morning, Chair Bennett and members of the Planning Commission. Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners here on behalf of Mr. Arya Asgari, who is the property owner and the rezoning applicant. Mr. Asgari is a Raleigh resident. He's a local developer. I'm also joined by Ross Massey, who is the Director of Civil Engineering at Swift Partners. Jacob did a fantastic job of reviewing the case, and so I'll do my best to not be repetitive. I will say at the outset of my presentation that we would like to request a deferral of Planning Commission's recommendation to the January 13th meeting. That will allow us additional time to offer conditions that I think address some of the sensitivities to the neighboring Trailwood neighborhood. So with that being said, the request is to rezone these two properties, which total 2.81 acres from R4 to R10 conditional use, keeping the parking overlay. The intent is to add housing near two transit emphasis corridors, Avant Ferry and Gorman Street, that are already programmed for high bus service and in proximity to a food line shopping center and a mixed-use center on the urban form map. We are consistent with the future land use map. We are consistent with the comprehensive plan overall. The intent behind the rezoning is, like I said, to add housing. What specific type of housing? Whether that takes the form of maybe a cottage court or even just a typical conventional townhome subdivision remains to be seen, but the intent is for all of these to be Again, Jacob did a great job of sort of locating the site. I will say that the two properties immediately north of our site, which are zoned R6, are currently under a pending rezoning to RX3. Let me see if I can pull up the menu. I don't know if I can. I'll go to the current zoning page. So the two properties immediately north that are R6, and then that property that's R4 to the northeast are part of a pending rezoning. I believe their second neighborhood meeting is December 1st, so they're, you know, maybe right in line with us when we come back in January, but those were previously rezoned, the two properties to the north. There is an approved townhome subdivision for those two properties, but again, they're looking to rezone for likely some sort of multifamily-style development. The two properties were previously subdivided, I think approximately 15 years ago. It's my understanding that it was done in order to make the sort of dwelling or the structure on Lot 1 a livable space, and that was probably at a time when you couldn't have two principal homes on a single lot, so that was likely the cause for the subdivision. I did just want to note out, however, that there is primary TCA already platted in the southwest corner, and there is secondary TCA that is platted along Trailwood Drive. The overlays in this area, all of the area that you see on the screen is within the special residential parking overlay district. This is a overlay district that applies to new, single-family detached dwelling units. I did want to point out the Trailwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, which we border to the west and the north, so most of the property, as you travel down Trailwood Drive, is within that NCOD. The regulations within that NCOD set minimums for lot size, frontage setbacks, and a max height of 2.5 stories and 30 feet, so essentially limiting types of development in that NCOD to a single-family detached style of development. We are within the frequent transit area. You can see we're, you know, in the southeastern quadrant of the Avant Ferry and Gorman Street intersection, so we're in proximity to two streets that already have high levels of bus service, and as I mentioned, the existing mixed-use shopping center anchored by the food line. I think this case presents a limited opportunity for infill development in this sort of area, this intersection of Gorman and Avant Ferry, for two reasons. One, the existence of the NCOD to our neighbors to the south and some to the east really limits the, you know, infill potential, the housing styles, the types of development that you could locate there just by a function of their regulations. And then from a natural perspective, Walnut Creek running from Lake Johnson to Lake Raleigh provides for a lot of floodway, a lot of hundred-year floodplain right in this proximate area as well. It does not concern our property as much. Like I said, there's that small portion of primary TCA in our southeast corner, but I think that this property is unique in the sense that it doesn't have sort of the environmental restrictions or the overlay restrictions and could allow for gentle density increases to capitalize on that transit access. So just to summarize, we are asking for a deferral to January 13th. The rezoning is currently consistent with the comprehensive plan with the future land use map, but we would like additional time to continue to craft conditions that address concerns from our neighbors. We are here to answer any questions you have, and we appreciate your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Worth. Is anyone else here to speak in support of this case? Okay, if not, the opposition now has a total of 10 minutes. Please state your name. You don't need to give your address, just your name, please.
My name is Patricia Beach, and I live on Trailwood Drive. We became Trailwood Property Owners in 1997.
Ms. Beach, may I ask you to please speak into the microphone so we can hear you? Thank you.
We became Trailwood Property Owners in 1997 and were immediately introduced to rezonings for the first time. The rezoning case that was on the table at that time was a sorority house. That case, which faced insurmountable opposition, was eventually withdrawn, but as I prepared my comments for today, I went back and looked at the history of that case and the notes that were made, and I want to read to you the notes that were written about the reasons that this neighborhood, what they considered important to consider for our neighborhood to protect it. And this is directly from a document that stated August 12th, 1998. "A list of reasons stating the neighborhood's position and opposition to any rezoning that is not compatible, appropriate, or acceptable to the neighborhood is listed below. Number one, preserve the quality of life we currently enjoy on Trailwood, Tannager, and Pickto, known as the Trailwood community. Number two, protect the 'neighborhood' concept of single-family dwellings on lots of two acres or more. Three, prevent any rezoning that will jeopardize the property values of existing homes. Four, protect existing wetlands, foliage, and wildlife indigenous to our neighborhood Number five, protect our pristine watershed, one of the last in Wake County. Six, and above all," which is in all caps, "prevent any high-density development not compatible or appropriate with the neighborhood concept. That is, high-density subdivisions, apartment complexes, low-income housing, and any commercial use of the property." And now, 25 years later, all of that is still the position that this neighborhood takes regarding rezonings. And we use these same guides as we evaluate rezoning cases. The Trailwood Neighborhood Plan was approved by the City Council in February of 1999, and the goals of that Trailwood Neighborhood Plan were first to preserve the unique character of the Trailwood neighborhood. This unique character is a result of the existing large lots and wooded settings, and to protect and enhance property values in the neighborhood. And within this neighborhood plan that was approved, the majority of the planned area was downzoned from R4 to R2, and the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District was applied to portions of the planned area. Specific standards were applied to the district. We're facing today three rezoning cases. I mean, not for this meeting, but there are active rezoning cases, three, that will affect, directly affect, our community. So, and one of the things I was going to ask was to defer any action on this, so you can consider the full impact of these three cases, if, you know, as they move forward, and not just look at this one case right now, but it sounds like that that deferral will work in our favor. My neighbor, John Totten, sent to you and some of the council members. He and his family are on holiday, but I want to read to you just a statement that was in here on his behalf. "We ask that Trailwood be permitted to remain what it has been for more than 70 years, a residential, single-family neighborhood where families can live without perpetual threat of displacement by developers." And then he goes on to ask, "We respectfully request that the Commission pause making a decision to fully consider the status of adjacent development plans for Case Z-3825." And then he just says, "A postponement to the next meeting would allow for fuller community participation and more comprehensive evaluation of cumulative impacts." Thank you for your time.
Do we have others who wish to speak in opposition?
Good morning. My name is Sarah Dietrich. I live at 1414 Trailwood Drive. I first would like, I appreciate what Pat Patricia has shared with each of y'all. I also would encourage, if you have not been down Trailwood, if you would take the opportunity to go and look at the site. I have concerns that with this case and as Mr. Hunt and them presented, the other two parcels that are up, the R6 and the R4, that all of those will be combined as they, the developer works to see, we're not even sure at this point what they truly want to build there, and the number of units keeps changing as well. I know they're looking for the optimal building to be able to return the most profit. Our concern is, one thing, the traffic. It's a two-lane road. There are no sidewalks on it. It's at least, I would say, estimate a half a mile to the bus stop at Avant Ferry. They can walk the greenway to go to the shopping center, but it's a good little walk. Also, living there, we have noticed lots of accidents, especially in the fall when the college students are there. Where I live is in the curve. They just take it a little too fast. If there's any sleet, wet roads, there have been several accidents there, and it really backs up when it's time to go to school and work in the morning. It's just really a busy road now. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Janice Stone, and we live at 1408 Trailwood. We're newer to the neighborhood, but when we first, you know, thought about buying a house there, it didn't seem to be in this high-density area, and it didn't seem like it was in an area that they had planned for high-density. So that was one of the reasons why we chose it. So just to keep it short, I don't feel like this plan fits the overlay or the plan that was for the low-density. So the high-density just doesn't seem to fit, and we probably wouldn't have bought there if we thought this is where it was going. So we would like to, you know, like the other neighbors, maintain our neighborhood and enjoy it the way that it is. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? We have 35 seconds left. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the table for Commissioner questions and comments. The applicant has asked to defer the case to January 13th, so perhaps some of our questions or comments could be around conditions that we would like to see when the case comes back.
Commissioner Otwell. Thank you, Chair Bennett. This is a question for staff. Read in one of the letters from the neighborhood that during the, one of the neighborhood meetings, the applicant stated that the current plan could be developed under the current zoning. Is this a frequent transit option that could be exercised? Could you expand a little bit on that?
Yeah, so the site could be developed under a frequent transit option, and I can give you those numbers if we need them. But as I remember, that would allow for a similar density to what the R10 would allow. Again, it would require 20% of the units over 12 to be affordable at, I think, 60% AMI, and it would also allow the apartment housing type, and this request eliminates that as a building type.
Other questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, I had a question. Well, a couple of questions. One, I think this is for staff. So I noted in the staff report, and then in some of the public comments, that this is in a frequent transit area, but the transit stop, the staff report notes, is currently inaccessible by sidewalk to this parcel.
Yes.
So how do you evaluate? I mean, I know what the applicant is requesting is consistent with the comp plan based on this being in a frequent transit area, but then it seems like the area itself is not necessarily, the infrastructure doesn't support frequent transit. So I feel like, it seems like the transportation and the land use need to go together to support a frequent transit area. It seems like there's an imbalance there.
Yeah, I'd say that with the future development of any of these sites, I think as a subdivision or as a tier-three site plan would require sidewalks and bike lanes to go in. That would be true now, I think, developing under R4 or with the possible rezoning. So just that, that's referencing if it actually is developed. If it's never developed, then there's no need for it to be as accessible to transit, and there isn't going to be access. There's always a world in which there can be spaces in between as things develop in different stages, but theoretically, long-term, if this row is developed, there would be access.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments for the applicant or staff? Okay, well, if not, then I guess without objection, I will defer this case to our January 13th meeting. Thank you. And that is our agenda. Let me, I'm sorry, trying to get to my script here. Next, we will move to our commissioner reports, beginning with the report of the chair. Just a couple of things first. Happy Thanksgiving. If you're celebrating Thanksgiving, enjoy your time off if you're not. Thank you for continuing to use the distribution email to let us know when you'll be absent. I'm sorry, could we ask that you move your comments outside the council chambers, please? Thank you. Um... Thank you. The last thing I have is, excuse me, an acknowledgement that this is Commissioner Miller's last meeting. She is concluding three terms on the Planning Commission, including two years as chair. Our terms have largely overlapped. Commissioner Miller and I have had some spirited debates, but I value how those debates forced me to examine cases from different perspectives, and I believe helped me to be a better commissioner and now chair. Over these six years, I've come to appreciate the things we have in common and to respect the things that make us different. I'll miss your voice, your presence, and your passion at this table, and I wish you the very best with whatever lies in the future for you. I know you'll be a force for good. It's been a pleasure serving with you. Commissioner Fox also sends her regards. She's sorry she couldn't be here. She wasn't feeling well, didn't want to share her germs, but she'll reach out to you. Commissioner Otwell.
Thank you, Chair Bennett. It's been a pleasure serving with you. We're certainly going to miss you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and thank you for an incredible six years of serving the city. It has often been spirited, but I know that every person here is passionate about public service and making the city better, and it's been really fantastic to work alongside with all of you. So thank you so much, and please stay in touch.
To second that, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I will be remiss if I didn't say I would, I would, I wish I had have served earlier because I didn't get a chance to engage with you, but thank you for your help, the notes and the support. So I wish you guys the best in your future adventures.
Thank you.
I would also echo my gratitude to Commissioner Miller for your time of service to our city. It's been a pleasure, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. No report.
And I also want to say best wishes, Commissioner Miller. It's been great being on the commission with you. No other report.
Yeah, echo all that. I appreciate you having been very welcoming when I first started, so thank you. No report.
Thank you all. Next, we will hear from our assistant director.
Thank you, Lanny.
You have been a great force on the commission. I really appreciate the seriousness that you have brought to this, but also the generosity and thoughtfulness. I just will note, you have served on every committee.
Yes.
You chaired text change, strategic planning. You served as vice chair. You serve as chair. You've done everything. Commissioner Miller is a model for each of you, for the good work, the good work that you could do, and I will, I will miss you. I will miss our Friday chats. You've been a great.
We can still chat on Fridays.
A great conspirator.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And then I am pleased to tell you that Adam Walters has been appointed to the Planning Commission. He will join us, I expect he will join us at the next meeting to begin his first term. So that's good. And then I also wanted to mention, at our next meeting, you will have in front of you revised rules of procedure document. So I think you know that the City Council had been working a special committee on boards and commissions. They have developed a template for boards and commissions to use for their bylaws or rules of procedure. The City Attorney's Office and Planning and Development Staff have been working together to develop a draft for your consideration and discussion. I would be kind of shocked if you took action on first reading, but if you do, that's great, but it might take a little conversation. So that is coming your way. If you want to talk about that before then, I'm happy to speak with you. Our Chair Miller could also talk with you. And then I will just say, happy Thanksgiving. I actually will not be here on the 9th, so happy New Year, for those who celebrate. But Matt, Clem, and Hannah Recau will be here on the 9th, along with Attorneys Ashton and probably Bockel as well, to guide you through the rules of procedure discussion. Thank you for a great 2025. We have done a ton, and I'm looking forward to 2026 with you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, then, we adjourned.